Good evening, everyone. We will reconvene in the Cloverdale City Council meeting at 6:08 in an open session. May please stand before the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the real public for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
And let the record reflect, all council members are present. Anything to report out from closed session? Alex.
The City Council made it closed session to discuss two real property negotiations. There is no reportable action.
Any conflicts of interest? Council.
Mayor, if we can take one second. It looks like our live feed is not showing the camera quite enough.
Okay. We'll get that to record and we'll go forward. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of Cloverdale. We've already gone through the Pledge of Allegiance, roll call, reported out on closed session, and done conflict of interest declarations. I apologize for the livestream not working. Moving on to agenda review. Do we have any changes or deletions?
Mayor, Members of the Council, no changes or deletions proposed by staff.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to do something a little bit unconventional. It's something that actually hasn't been done in eighty-seven years. That's the retire a gavel. This gavel came to us in nineteen thirty-six from A. Joseph Jovanetti, who was the city clerk. And it has been in use since January one of nineteen thirty-six until February eighth of two thousand twenty-three. And in our audience, we have A. Joseph's grandchildren, Jerry and Paul. And they would like to say something about their grandfather and what he meant to Cloverdale and to the City Council and the city itself. Take your stuff.
I'm a little nervous here. My grandparents moved here in nineteen twenty-seven. And my father was the junior of A. Joseph Jovanetti Jr. And when he came here, we don't know for sure he was either the first or second manager of the Bank of America. He worked for the old Bank of Italy in San Francisco back, you know. He was born in eighteen eighty-seven. He worked for that GNID guy who used to have the Bank of Italy. They sent him up here anyway. So they've been here for nine, my family and my dad's side have been here for ninety-two years. My mother's family came in twenty-seven. They've been here ninety-four years. So anyway, he was the lover of Cloverdale. My dad was the same way.
Like him.
Of course, me. They used to say if Cloverdale burned down, my grandpa would be the first, the last guy out. And then when he passed in nineteen seventy, they said, if Cloverdale burns down, Joe. They called him both Joe. Their first names were Amorico, Joe Junior and Joe Senior. And then my father passed twenty-five years ago, thirteen minutes after my fiftieth birthday. So they said, the last guy out of town, if it burns, is going to be Paul. And unfortunately, I don't have any offspring, so we're the end of the deal anyways. So I want to thank you for bringing this up with our family, our long history of Cloverdale.
Well, if there is anybody that is known in this town, it is the two of you. And if anyone represents Cloverdale, it is the Jovanettis that walk every day. You see them, they talk to everyone. Everyone knows who you are. You share with the entire city.
Yeah, our forty-five-minute walk always takes two hours because we know everybody in town.
I think your lips get a bigger workout than your legs do.
I actually served on a plan, I actually served on a planning commission like thirty-five years ago for one term, so.
Well, thank you for sharing your stories and thank you for sharing your grandfather with us.
Could we get a picture after with that holding and me and my sister, maybe?
Absolutely, and I will try my damnedest not to break it tonight because I think that's why we're retiring it, is Michael got scared. The one time I've had to use this, I thought that splinters were going to fly, so. It's made out of tungsten steel now, so we're good. So absolutely pictures after, and I would like to ask anyone else that wants to say anything.
Thank you for recognizing us, our family and my grandfather. So we're really proud of that. Questions?
Thank you. Well, Paul, I just want to say it's, I'm really happy that we're going to be able to do this. And I think we're going to put it in the shadow box and put it in City Hall. So that would really be good to have it on display there, maybe in the lobby as you walk in. But I know what you mean about your walks in the morning because when you go by my house, you'll stop at John and Julie Cole, and then you'll go down a little further and stop across the street, and you almost stop at every neighborhood. But I always enjoy seeing you and Jerry come by, so thank you.
Right. Thank you for what you.
Anyone else? Would you like to take the picture now so you don't have to sit through the whole meeting? All right. Anyone want in?
Go ahead.
I'll get in.
Okay.
I don't know.
Right here looks good.
Oh, you want to have a whole bunch of them?
No, we're only one.
I counted this one.
No, that or this.
No, of course.
First section.
You can't scoot this way a little bit, this way a little bit.
Did you get it with my hair comb? One more. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. C, Public Comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in our audience that would like to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, do we have anyone in the attendees list?
We do not, Mayor. No one's raising their hand at this time.
Okay. Then at this time, I will close public comment. D, Communications. The council may discuss at this time written communications sent to council members since the last council meeting. Have any? Moving to the next is E, Proclamations and Presentations. The first one is our student liaison report.
Thank you, everyone. For my report today, I have that soccer boys had their senior night last night and won their first game of the season being twelve to zero. Boys and girls soccer, oh yeah, okay. Girls soccer has their last game today. Spring sports officially began on Monday. Winter sports banquet will be on March eighth at six PM at Cloverdale High School. The WASC finished their evaluation of CHS today, and we await the report in about six weeks. CHS has a Valentine's Day dance on Saturday. CSF students are selling Valentine's Day gramps to raise funds for scholarships for seniors. We don't have school on February sixteenth, seventeenth, and twentieth for the Citrus Fair. Registration for class schedules for next year have begun and are due next week. Most of our key club members will be volunteering at the Steelhead Festival. And I thought this would be nice to add, but Key Club is looking for any service projects that could be done around Cloverdale. If anything comes to mind about service projects, please let me know. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? Moving on to E two, a proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Is there anyone who would like to read this? Seeing none, I will. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring February twenty-twenty-three Black History Month in Cloverdale. Whereas, ooh, sorry, it's really loud. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas, Black History Month grew out of the establishment in nineteen twenty-six of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other peoples of African descent. And whereas, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History sponsored a National Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six, choosing the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. The event inspired schools and communities nationwide to organize local celebrations, establish history clubs, and host performances and lectures becoming a month-long celebration in nineteen seventy-six. Whereas since nineteen seventy-six, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. And whereas Black History Month honors the contributions of African-Americans to U.S. history, among prominent figures are Madam C.J. Walker, who was the first U.S. woman to become a self-made millionaire, George Washington Carver, who derived nearly three hundred products from the peanut, Rosa Parks, who sparked the Montgomery Bus Boycott and galvanized the Civil Rights Movement, and Shirley Chisholm, who was the first African-American woman elected to the U.S. House of Representatives. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Sorry, I got lost on my paper. Whereas, the City of Cloverdale continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community, the state, the country, the world. And whereas, the City of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby declare February two thousand twenty-three as Black History Month in Cloverdale and encourages all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. So ordered, myself, the mayor.
Is anyone accepting the?
No, sir. Sign it and get it back to our clerk. Okay, moving into F, Consent Calendar. Items anyone would like to poll?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to poll item number F eight, the appointment of the Commissioner for the Cloverdale Library.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to poll? We have a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar minus item F eight.
Okay, so we have a motion for F one through F seven. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second. Michael, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern.
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Mayor Lance.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to F eight, the appointment of Brooke Green to serve a four-year term as Cloverdale's representative on the Sonoma County Library Commission.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this item to be pulled, and you and I both had the opportunity to interview the candidates that had applied for this position. And I just thought it would be great. You know, we selected Brooke, and I thought it would be nice if the City Council, especially the new members, had a face to put with the name. And Brooke, you know, we're tickled that you stepped forward, and we know you're going to do a good job for the city. You've got some tough shoes to fill, but I know you can do it. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Brooke the opportunity to come up and say a few words if she'd like.
Hold on one second, we'll get it.
It's okay, we don't have a picture anymore, so.
Oh, I want to thank you for your confidence in me. I am so excited about this. I am full of enthusiasm, and I've been already learning what I can learn. And the mission of the Sonoma County Library is to bring information, ideas, and people together to build a stronger community. And who can't get behind that mission? So, so looking forward to representing the city that I love on the Library Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Any questions or comments? Anyone? Seeing none? Brooke, the county has asked us to swear you in versus them, and I know you spoke to Michael and said you were willing to do that here, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. We're going to ask them if they have any comments. They will come back, vote, and then if you succeed and pass our vote, then we will have you sworn in.
Thank you very much, Tom.
At this point, I'll let me open it up to public comment. Do we have anyone in our audience?
Well, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Brooke for stepping forward. I have known her for several years now, and I think she's going to do a fabulous job. I had the immense pleasure of serving as that commissioner and giving to Cloverdale and to the county and to the citizens all over. And I just, I just appreciate it. And thank you, and thank you, Brooke, again for doing this. And enjoy and have fun. Thank you all.
Thank you, Reese. Any other public comments? Seeing none. In virtual, I see no hands. So at this point, do we have a motion?
A second.
Motion to second.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Mayor Lance.
Aye.
So this time, Michael, would you please swear in Brooke Green?
Get a picture of this too, so.
Great. Okay. Do I need to do anything? Hi, Brooke Green.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to.
And allegiance to.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving forward with no public hearings under G, so we'll move into H, New Business. If it's okay with everyone, I'd like to move H three and do it first, since we have people in the audience for it. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. So H three is review a request by Cloverdale Rotary Policy to install a flagpole on the Cloverdale Park Plaza for display of a peace flag. David?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. This item tonight is brought forward to review the request that was submitted by the Cloverdale Rotary Club and to receive your direction on potential next steps. Dolph Green, President of Rotary, approached the city about installation of a flagpole on City Park Plaza, the purpose of which is to display a peace flag. And I'll let Mr. Green speak to kind of the philosophy behind this request for installation of a peace flag. But with that said, the city does maintain a flag policy which provides for flying a list of commemorative flags. In order to fly a peace flag, it does require the council to add it to your list of approved flags. Per your policy, it requires that we bring it forward for your direction. Cloverdale Rotary, part of their request, we did look at some alternative locations for the possible display of a peace flag. Those included, of course, the city plaza. But in addition to that, we looked at the library and Second Street Park. There was some criteria that were provided by Rotary for, you know, our consideration in terms of flying the peace flag, and that was that, you know, it has some prominence to reflect its intent and that it be, you know, really a statement as a focal point. And I think, given that criteria, the plaza was kind of the prime location for consideration. So after review of the location, staff did determine that it is feasible to install an additional flagpole as well as a flag on the plaza. There is a location at the, kind of the northeast corner of the turf area located next to City Hall. In turn, Rotary provided six exhibits depicting potential alternatives for the peace flag. Those are included in your packet. Rotary also provided a specification for the flagpole, which was also included in your packet, which they have agreed to provide both the flagpole and the flag for our flying. So the action tonight is, requested tonight is, you know, whether or not to support Rotary's requested location for installation of a new flagpole on our plaza, and whether or not to amend, bring forward an amendment to your adopted flag policy to add this, add a peace flag to the list of commemorative flags that are approved by the City Council currently. There are two. There is the rainbow flag is an approved commemorative flag along with the flag that recognizes young children. So those are two that are on the list, and we'd want to seek your direction whether to add the peace flag as part of the approved flag policy. So I'll kind of pause there. Happy to, we can bring it forward or identify the exhibit showing that there's six models for consideration, the peace flag. And I know that Mr. Green, representing Rotary, has brought some examples with him, and happy to answer any questions council may have about Rotary's request this evening.
Thank you, David. Council, would you like to comment, question?
Yeah, I have a question, and it's a little bit of a concern. And I absolutely support the flag and the content and working with Rotary on this, but I know that we made a promise to the certified farmers market regarding them being able to use the plaza. And I'm just a little bit concerned, and I think in the staff report, it said it's a northwest corner, David. I think you just said northeast. And so I'm assuming it's the grassy area that's kind of behind the wall of City Hall. And I'm just wondering, you know, has staff considered the impact to the certified farmers market because they did indicate an interest of, you know, utilizing parts of the plaza for certain purposes? And we've got them coming up starting in March.
Absolutely. Great question, Councilmember Bagby. The location again is the northeast corner of the turf area, which is between the fence and City Hall. So it's an area that would, in our opinion, would not affect the operation of the farmers' market. It's.
Just to be clear, it's that, so you've got the City Hall wall, and so you're saying it's away from the street toward the fence.
That's correct.
So not dead center in the middle of the turf. Thank you. That answers my question. I think that would be awkward for the food vendors that they were hoping to set up over there, so thank you.
It's kind of on the western side of the plaza, but the northeastern corner of the turf area.
David, is that the, is that the area that you and I looked at previously, that corner that we're talking about?
That's correct, Councilmember Wheeler. There's kind of a bulb out within the existing concrete path, so we looked at it today with the park superintendent. There is some relatively minor irrigation equipment in that corner, but it kind of, the way it's designed, kind of fitting for something to be located there. I think in addition to the flagpole, Rotary would like to have a commemorative plaque at the base of the, at the base of the flagpole, and I think that could be accommodated. I did want to note that Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Walter, did include for your consideration correspondence that was received regarding peace poles for the Sonoma County Veterans Building. That's, you know, a separate proposal, but I know, I think, Vice Mayor, you wanted to kind of bring that to our attention, that there is this concurrent interest in a peace pole at the Veterans Hall.
Yeah, thank you, David. But just backing up to the location, so it's on the opposite side behind the bus stop, way back in the corner there.
That's correct. There's some existing trees that kind of between, in the landscape area between the turf and the path, and it'd be located in that northeast corner.
Well, thank you for that, and I agree, that's a good location. You know, yesterday's, I happen to be the liaison for the Veterans Building here to the County Board of Supervisors, and yesterday we had a meeting, and one of the veterans who is with one of the VFW posts is requesting that the county allow each veteran's memorial building to have what's called a peace pole put up on that property. This is just in the inference stages. Nothing has been approved. We don't even know if it's ever going to come to fruition. And I just wanted to share that with my fellow council members. I did have the opportunity to talk to Dolph Green before the meeting, and he is aware of this organization, but it's not a flag. It's almost kind of like a totem pole. So when and if that ever comes to fruition, I guess at some point, it might come to the City Council, or the county just may decide to go ahead and put them up. So I'm, just a couple of questions. I'm sure that this flag will not fly any higher than the United States flag. It will be lower. And if you could just reiterate. And if you could just reiterate, who's going to decide when, where, and what gets put up on the flag pole? Who's going to be responsible for changing that flag pole out? Is it going to be the Rotary Club, or is it something city staff is going to be doing?
Thank you, Councilmember. And ultimately, it is council's discretion whether to amend the policy to allow for the flying of the peace flag. We'll have to verify the height of, there are two existing flag poles, one adjacent to the police station and one in front of City Hall. It appeared that basically the height of this pole was 30 feet, that it would be at or below the US flag, but we would need to confirm that. Given that the pole would be located on city property, it would become a city staff responsibility to raise that flag. We do not have any current schedule associated with the raising and lowering of the flag. I think the intent would be that it would fly probably at all times, though, again, we could receive your direction if you'd like to see it lowered under certain, you know, certain circumstances.
Well, where I was going with that is who decide which flag, who decides which flag is going to be flown when? There's six of them here. And so what's the rotation schedule?
Well, I believe the intent in providing the alternatives was for council to consider if there was a particular preference. And maybe I'll let Mr. Green speak to that. I think it's really council's choice if you have a clear favorite, you know, to identify that particular flag, and that would become the flag of interest.
Councilmember Morgan's turn.
I'd like, are we picking flags now?
Well, we're just making comments or questions about where we're at right now. Okay. So this idea was brought to, basically to me, Dolph and I, and Elvia, another Rotary member, had a conversation about, they wanted to donate something to the city that really meant something. And it was right around the controversial time that I wanted to create a flag policy in Cloverdale. And that's where this idea stemmed from. And Dolph has done a great job running with it to really push, because it's not easy to make things happen in a city, especially in eight months, I believe it's been, it's taken to get to this point. And I think it's a great idea. I think it's chosen a great location that is in central to town. I think that the idea of the peace flag not only represents everything that we stand for, but it's what Rotary stands for. And so I think it's very meaningful to them as well as our community. And I think it's a great place to also have the flags that we chose in our policy to be flying on that, on that flag, on that pole as well. So they can be flown at the times that we choose to, with our new policy that we're going to have to rewrite. But I think that instead of having them on, over City Hall where they are part of America, and then California, and then something different, and then have something around the corner, where all our peace flags and all our commemorative flags will be flown together. And I think that this is a great way to do it, to represent our entire community and the world at once. Dolph, I'd like you to come up if you don't, before I open to public, if it's okay.
Thank you. Wanted to thank David Kelly and the city workers for working with me on that. I appreciate you guys going out and checking out the spot. As you probably know, Rotary International right now is leading the fight to end polio. Rotary started that campaign in 1978, and here we are, 45 years later, and we're this close. Polio's down to two countries, Afghanistan and Pakistan. Why do I bring that up? Because we're embarking on our next major campaign, and that's global peace. When you look around our community and the world, there's just simply too much hate going on. Hate is hate regardless of who it's directed at. And Rotary, Rotary International, is in a unique position to achieve this auspicious goal. People don't really realize this, but Rotary has clubs in the Ukraine. We also have clubs in Russia. So we're in a really unique position in that we cross borders, we cross religion, we cross politics. The peace flag will be a constant reminder in a world that needs reminding that peace is the answer. The location in the town square, I think, is perfect. It's a quiet reflective corner, a place where the community can come together for vigils and to embrace and be reminded that peace is the answer. I have two plaques that I would like to hang up there, or quotes on the pole or on the stand, and some of those details have to be worked out. One of them comes from our own Cloverdale family, Courtney Davis. As you probably are aware, that young lady fought the brave fight against a rare cancer. Her quote would be, "Life is only as bad as you make it." I think that's reflective on, you know, peace, right? Life is only as bad as you make it. And we got to make life better for ourselves. The other one, the second quote I'd like to put up is, "Intelligent people forgive for the sake of peace." And that quote comes from Nelson Mandela. And we really need to be more intelligent about how we operate and forgive. So like the polio mountain that Rotary started climbing 45 years ago, we're starting to climb this mountain. And who knows where we'll be 45 years from now. But we need to start, I hope, with a small corner of a small lawn and a small community, Cloverdale. So I thank you. I'll take any questions you might have. I brought this, I gave you a lot of different samples because David wanted to see samples. This is just an example of something that, you know, clearly reflects the message. So, you know, you can manipulate it. I looked at the global one. There was one that was pretty cool that showed it's like the new world thing. But I don't know if people would recognize it as, this is what we're trying to promote. I know that Rotary is involved in the, in that other peace pole, completely different program, completely different thought process. So with that, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions from council? Dolph? Okay. I'm going to open up to public. You might get some questions out of the public. We'll see what happens. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone in the virtual world? I see no hands.
No hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Perfect. So this time, we'll bring it back to the dais. David, are we, are we going to be talking about choosing a flag that the city would like to, or is that, is that for the city later in Dolph, or is that now?
I would recommend council give direction on their preference. I can coordinate with Mr. Green on the flag that reflects your preferences. And ultimately, we would also, assuming council supports the idea, amend the currently adopted outdoor flag policy to list the commemorative peace flag.
And also change it to where it's from over City Hall to on that pole.
Right. We'll have to look at the standard to, because in a sense, the policy was developed to provide guidance where there are multiple flags. And so we'll have to work with the city attorney's office on if there's any other amendments, just to ensure that it remains consistent with the existing policy and also provides for the flying of the peace flag. Because there's other language regarding when we lower the flag, and, you know, we have to, I think, do this flag concurrently to ensure that it's not flying higher than the US flag.
Let's start with seeing what everyone wants for this flag. And there's six attachments. Anyone has a preference for which one you like? Just if you do, pages one, two, and three, and there, one, two, three, four, five, six, so that we can figure it out. Ms. Councilmember Morgan, I know you had brought it up.
I have a preference. I really like the first flag because it's very simple, and it's very kind of peaceful looking and very zen, and it's elegant and attractive. And so my preference would be the simpler, the better. I mean, we could, you know, it could say peace underneath it so people understand what the symbol's for, or have one white dove. But I really like the simplicity of a two-color kind of elegant zen-looking flag.
Do you have a second preference that maybe we can kind of?
The peace symbol one with the tie dye is my second preference.
Vice Mayor?
I like number two, the one that Dolph just showed us. I think the first one, I know it doesn't, but it kind of reminds me of the Olympics a little bit as opposed to, as opposed to a peace flag. And yeah, so that's the one. I also like my second one, Hope, Love. The, I guess that's flag number?
Five.
Five. The black one with the multicolors, so.
I'd like to make another comment. As somebody who used to do set decoration for film, I think if it gets too intricate, it's going to be hard for people to read what it says also.
Thank you. Councilmember Wheeler?
You know, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Green here on this one. I think that if, if we do decide to move that and figure out we're going to move all of these flags over into the corner of the plaza, you know, you got people coming down for Friday Night Live, and they look up at flag number one. And are they going to know immediately, does that mean, are we looking at world peace, or what does that flag mean, is going to be the question? You know, so my preference would be flag number two. For, and then also, I like, I like the last one with the two doves, the green background, and the peace sign. People are going to know what that means. When they look up, and they're going to say, okay, that's a peace flag, coordinates with the peace pole and your sayings that you're looking at putting on there. So I think it's a big package right there.
Uggby?
Yeah, I like the one that Dolph brought. That's, that's my first choice of all the ones that I really liked. And then I did like the second from the last, the, I can't read it without my glasses, Hope, Love, Equality, Inclusion, and Kindness. I think, especially in the spot that it's in, I think it's going to be a little bit more intimate. It's, and more visible to the people who are walking by and who hopefully will be enjoying our farmers market. And I do like that last choice. I like the green one as well. But I have to give it up to the second to the last, as my, as my second choice. Hopefully, we could have more than one.
Student liaison, have you got a chance to look at any of these? I'd like you to weigh in if you don't mind. He's blinking on her.
I got a chance to look at them, and I really liked the second one. It's like giving like very good messages. It's kind of like if you're getting almost all the flags and putting it all into one. I think that's what it's like trying to give. Second preference? I also really like example six. It's like the same with like the doves and like a big peace sign. So then like, even if you're pretty far away from like the flag pole, then you could still see like world peace and like the doves.
Thank you very much. I'd agree that number two is my favorite as well. So it looks like we have consensus. And I won't say what my second is or talk about it anymore. There's no reason to drag it out. I love it. So I like moving forward. And we can go on to talking about the policy.
And it has the added advantage that Dolph already has one.
And he already has one. So with the policy, who would like to maybe discuss this first? We don't have to vote on anything with this. This is just direction, just making sure.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll go first if nobody's jumping. I just want to make sure I'm clear, David, that currently now on the flag pole in front of City Hall, we currently fly the gay pride flag and child abuse flag. So we're no longer going to fly them on that pole. They're all going to be shifted over to this new pole. Did I hear that correctly?
The intent is to continue to fly the children's memorial flag and pride flag on the flag pole at City Hall.
Okay.
Underneath the US flag.
Right.
There's only room for two flags on that flag pole. Really, the flag pole that would be dedicated by Rotary would be basically dedicated to the purpose of flying the peace flag.
And it would be changed out from time to time, I would imagine?
We could certainly coordinate with Rotary on changing the flag. And maybe, what I heard is a lot of interest in two, and maybe flag five. I think if we amend the policy, it would be section 6.1.2, where it identifies which commemorative flags have been approved by council. We would identify the peace flag, location Plaza, and the time period be, would really be year round.
And I know Mr. Green is an attendee of Friday Night Live. So when he sees those flags getting a little tattered, I'm sure he'll replace them with something new. So I'm in favor of the project.
Anyone else want to make any comments on this?
Do we need to, a resolution recommended? Is that Alex?
When the flag policy comes back, we'll have that. But for now, just discussion.
Because this is just our, you know, this is from 2022. Okay, great. But yeah, I'm so pleased that Rotary brought this forward. I think it's a wonderful program. Looking forward to seeing it as soon as possible in the plaza. That'll be great. Thanks so much. I mean, Rotary does so much for our community especially. It's just, it's, you know, there just aren't words to describe. And this is just, this is just one thing that they do for our community and for, for our local programs. And it's a beautiful expression. I'm really looking forward to this new challenge that they're taking on. And, you know, and they've helped eradicate polio. I mean, think about that. That's just an amazing accomplishment. And I don't think, I can't think of any organization better ready to take on world peace. So let us know what we can do to help.
I'm 100% on board with it also. And like Councilman Bagby said, you know, they eradicated polio, and you're starting a new climb to world peace. You know, the more people we can get on board with that, the better, the more kindness out there. So I'm 100% on board, and I'm looking forward to seeing that out there on the plaza.
The only thing I want to also bring up is, when we discussed this, it was also to include the other flags when we first brought it up through Rotary. I would like, personally, I believe that over City Hall, it should be very neutral and always have just the American flag and the state flag. And I would like to change policy to have any other flags we decide to fly through our policy on this pole as well. And that's how, what this had brought forth in the very beginning stages. And that's just, that was my opinion. That was Rotary's opinion. I don't know if it still is, Dolph. I don't know if you want to speak to that. But when we had first brought this up, it was to fly any other flag so that City Hall could remain neutral at all times for everyone, and that anything else could be part of that. Yes, please.
Yeah, I think that having multiple flags on the pole would be fine as far as that's concerned. I mean, I think the focus is peace, but peace is an all encompassing thing, right? So some of those other flags, I think, reflect that. I think we could put two flags on it so you could have a peace flag at the top. We certainly would rotate those flags to give just some kind of different look. And then you could hang, you know, anything else on the bottom. I don't think that that's a significant issue for us. So I agree with that.
Thank you. And I'm fine either way. It's just what the discussion was at the beginning. And I want to make sure that we're doing what was proposed in the very beginning and the whole intent behind it, you know, making sure that everything was included and inclusive and part of our downtown.
Right. It's supposed to create a community focus on, you know, those good positive things. And peace is part of that, as well as child abuse and all those others. So, yeah.
But I bring it up. If nobody else supports it, it's fine by me.
I'm afraid I can't support it. I think it's very, very important that during Pride Month, that because those who are represented, who are represented by the pride flag are a protected class, it's perfectly appropriate for government to make a statement and shouldn't be offensive to anybody. So I'd like to continue to fly the pride flag in prominence at City Hall, as well as the, the flag against violence against children. I think it's very important to put that issue as well, that we, as a community and a city government, say that we are united against, we are united in supporting people who are members of a protected class and who are traditionally vulnerable in our society. And it's a very important symbol that we fly both of those flags at the appropriate months at our City Hall. So I wouldn't like, I wouldn't want to see that changed. But I definitely support seeing the peace flag on the pole dedicated at, at the plaza, because traditionally, that is the place where people come together together for great times, to protest the things that we're still working on in our community. working on in our community and our society as a whole. And so I think it's just, it would be very important to members of the community to continue the tradition of flying the pride flag as well as the violence against children opposition flag at our City Hall because those are vulnerable classes in our society and our community, and they need our support.
You know, I think I would support the idea of having the flags flown over on the plaza. Reason being, I believe it's more visible. You know, I know when I have driven up the Boulevard during, when the pride flag is flying, it's hard to see coming one direction. You have to look up and you're kind of looking to see it. I think that if we had the pride flag and the child abuse flag flying out there, especially when it comes up to, you know, you've got people using the plaza, Friday Night Live, everything, they're going to see all those. And so I think I support having that as our flagpole for the world peace, the pride, and also the child, you know, the child abuse flag up there. I think it's more visible in my opinion.
I think I'd prefer to see the gay pride and the other flags we have on the new flagpole. I think the one in front of City Hall, when we have the opportunity to dedicate that strictly to the American flag and the state flag, that's what we should do. And I don't think it's disrespectful to anybody to have that, those two flags flown on the peace pole. So I'd like to see them flying on the Rotary's new pole.
I agree with Brian that more people will see all the flags that we do put them in the plaza.
That was the point of putting it in the plaza, the downtown centralized, where everyone gathers. So, you need more direction? Is there anything else?
Student liaison.
Student liaison, would you like to comment on this at all? Do we have any other flags that anyone has thought of that they would like to fly other than two since they're bringing it out now? I don't have any.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, from a military standpoint, you know, the MIA flag, missing in action comrades, we fly one at the Vets Building. So I'm comfortable. If we didn't have that at the Vets Building, I would like to see that flown once in a while. But I can't think of anything right now that I would want to see flown.
The only other thing that you might know, I don't know, or it might be something we have to look up, is the height of the flag, which was mentioned earlier. So whatever that is, David, can you research that and make sure that we're doing it correctly so that we're meeting state standard, national standards? Should I open up a public comment again, or do we need to? I don't remember. We did it already. Okay. We didn't? Well, you know what? We did two parts. So basically, you're right. So let me do a public comment for this as well. Does anyone in our audience have anything that they'd like to say?
I'm all for putting the peace flag and the peace in the plaza. However, I disagree with the fact that that's the place where it would be most visible, the other two flags, both flags, the children's flag and the gay pride flag. I think the city needs to make a larger statement by putting it on the obvious flagpole in front of City Hall instead of burying it in the corner of the plaza thing. It's going to be back by the fence, by the wall of the thing. You drive by, you've got all these trees here, unless you're going around to go to the post office, you can't see it, not like it. You can, when you come to Friday Night Live or something like that, you'll be able to see it. But that's the only time it's really going to be obvious. And I really believe that the city needs to keep making statements about some of these issues that are occurring within our culture that are destructive to it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reese.
Hi, good evening, Jane Elias, Cloverdale. I guess what I didn't quite understand in reading the summary report, it talks about the flagpoles are owned by the city, and it sounds like this is going to be donated, that the Rotary Club is going to donate this flagpole and that it's going to be then sitting on city property. And I just want to make sure that as this flag policy is revisited, that the city is still giving the importance to what you agreed upon last year in these commemorative flags. And I tend to agree as well that, you know, last year, you did make that policy to have those two commemorative flags fly on that main flagpole. I agree that it should stay that way and not go around the corner. I do think it will be hidden. I think it's great that we are focusing on world peace, and I think it's a fabulous campaign that Rotary is putting forward. I mean, it'd be wonderful to be able to put that in the front as well, but I understand there's not enough room. But my two senses, I would really like to see what you did vote upon earlier about the commemorative flags and that they stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I do want to make a quick comment on that. This was brought forward because of that policy and making sure that it stood out here in Cloverdale. That's what brought this forward. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that was, the Rotary came to us looking for something like this. That's why it was here, because of that. So it was very important to Cloverdale, still is very important to Cloverdale and always will be. Good? Anyone on the?
Thank you, Mayor. No one's raising their hand at this time, online or in person.
Thank you. At this time, we'll bring him back to the dais. We have direction. Anything further needed, David?
Nothing further from staff. Mayor, thank you.
Dolph, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Back up to H1, mid-year review of adopted budget goals for the city of Cloverdale fiscal year '22 through '24 budget.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. If it's okay with council, I'm going to give a little bit of an overview on both items, H1, which is the mid-year budget goal review, as well as H2. And then what will follow is a staff presentation, a PowerPoint on both. So a little bit of background, in June of 2022, the council adopted a two-year budget. The two-year budget was for the period of July 1, starting July 1, 2022, through June 30th of 2023, and July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. The two-year budget really consists of two one-year budgets. This is really the first time in recent history that the council has adopted, developed and adopted a two-year budget. And, you know, one of the stated goals of doing that was to both save time and effort. It takes staff quite a bit of time to develop your annual budget, and I think we're already realizing some time savings this year. We would have been embarking on the budget process for next year's budget if we hadn't taken the time to develop a two-year budget. But I think more importantly than saving our time and effort is to reinforce the fiscal health of the city by having, kind of broadening your time horizon for looking at the economics, the fiscal health of the city from, you know, a discrete 24-month period to a 24-month period. It gives you a little bit of a longer-term perspective, and it kind of aligns better too with how we are able, how we deliver the work plan that is guided by council. During that budget development process, you know, we used to use kind of the, kind of a strategic planning process to assess out a lot of the budget goals. Often what happened was you would develop these very long kind of budget goals that were kind of like strategic planning goals, but we did that every year. And sometimes it was difficult within the budget timeframe to realize a goal that was really kind of intended for a longer period of time. Instead, we started to focus on really what was the key work plan objectives that council wanted staff in the city to implement. And in doing so, we started with identifying what were the key, the key budget themes that ran through all elements of your budget. And remember, your budget consists of a host of series of funds. Of course, very prominent in the budget is our general fund. But likewise, we have the Water Enterprise, Wastewater Enterprise, Airport Fund, along with a host of other, of other special funds, including your development impact fees, your landscape and lighting districts, gas taxes, and et cetera. So as part of that process, we really saw a number of themes that kind of developed out of the work plan, and we brought that forward to councils for consideration. And shown on the slide here is the key seven budget themes that we see run through the budget. And I think all of these kind of resonate with council and the community and staff. Those included, of course, the drought response. When we embarked upon preparation of the budget, we were, you know, in the midst of a prolonged drought, and there was a lot of intent to promote water conservation and water development projects that support and enhance our local water supply. Revenue enhancement under the broad term of economic development continues to be a key theme. I think it's a reoccurring goal is how do we continue to improve the fiscal health of the city and bring in additional revenue to pay for the services and the projects that we'd like to deliver for our community. Of course, infrastructure is front of mind. When we say infrastructure, kind of capital I, there's a lot of different projects that fall under that heading. Council adopted a five-year strategic plan, or five-year capital improvement plan, excuse me, that outlines all of the infrastructure improvement that you'd like to see within the city under various headings, whether it's water, wastewater, streets, public facilities, parks, et cetera. This last year, we also see a lot of concerns around technology, and it became clear that it was necessary to invest in some improvements that particularly were focused on our cybersecurity. And Mike, if you can go to the next slide. Where all this is going is the budget goal statements that were ultimately included in the two-year budget. Moving forward, planning and sustainability was a key goal. We sought to particularly implement planning initiatives, including your update of your downtown plan, the general plan housing element, all the while looking at meeting our sustainability targets and goals. And that certainly reflected in our turnkey program. And then last but not least, emergency preparedness. And I want to mention that, you know, a critical component of this goal is continuing to support public safety as well and enhance, and investments that enhance our emergency preparedness and response. And we've seen that with the development of our evacuation plan by our Cloverdale Police Department led up by Chief Ferguson, the update of our emergency operation plan and the Clover Ready and the Resilient Cloverdale initiatives. So just a little bit of background is how we got to these budget goal statements is they're really reflective of the work plan that we're implementing, which is, which council through the budget is directing resources, i.e. budget resources, to be able to implement those work plan goals. So, Mike, next slide. So starting with our drought response, part of this presentation is to highlight not only some of the accomplishments we've made over the preceding six months, but also to outline what are some of the, will continue to be part of our work plan over the remainder of the budget. So we were successful in applying for and obtaining a $3.2 million DWR grant. Key to that funding was our advanced metering infrastructure upgrade project. We are in the midst of, we've had some kickoff meetings, so we'll be working diligently on that project with our project team. Our Public Works Director is going to be taking lead on really all of these projects with particularly our water and streets team to, you know, replace all the meters within our water system, likewise expanding SCADA to provide better monitoring and management of our potable water system. And then last but not least, replacement of well seven and reconstruction of well eight, rehabilitating that well. So one thought that I want to kind of plant in your mind as we review these goals is to think about if there are any amendments or modifications or updates to these goals. And we talked a little bit about this at the last council meeting, for example, because when we developed the budget, you know, drought response was key. Now, as we've seen with all the recent precipitation and the water levels improve, that maybe it's time to kind of update or pivot on this goal to maybe more one of drought resiliency. And so, you know, that's the kind of feedback that we'd like to see as we move through this presentation. What are maybe some key modifications that could be made to these goals to more clearly reflect what we're doing and council's direction on these goals? So, Mike, next slide. So moving forward, revenue enhancement. One item that's not reflected here is council has continued to fund the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce does a lot to support and promote business activity in our city, and I believe there's a lot of return on that investment in terms of bringing positive branding to our community, especially we see that with Experience Cloverdale. But we've also implemented or overseen a number of programs that have helped particularly our Water Enterprise. We talked a little bit at the Finance and Admin and Police Subcommittee how we've brought, you know, over $50,000 back into our Water Enterprise through participating in the arrears payment program and the low-income household water assistance program. Mutual benefits there. It helped bring that revenue back to our Water Enterprise, but likewise helped our customers that were struggling with some of the payment of their outstanding water bills. Of course, council did update our water and wastewater rates. That continues to be critically important. For the most part, we are still operating on what we refer to as a pay-as-you-go strategy. And the reason I say that is because it's just like our personal savings account, in order to fund those critical capital improvement projects, we have to save up. We have to save the revenue that we're collecting now to be able to have adequate funding to pay for those projects when we want to deliver them. Of course, council has to head foresight to put additional funding towards Grant Rider. That was clear with the, the benefit of that was clear with the $3.2 million grant that we, you know, revenue that we're bringing back to the city. And likewise, with the PG&E turnkey program that we're implementing, that's going to help reduce, reduce some of the costs of, particularly for utilities, and again, you know, act as a revenue enhancer by reducing costs. Next slide, Mike. On housing and homelessness, we've made some key accomplishments, but there's still, you know, more work to do. We've seen now the opening of the Cherry Creek Affordable Housing Project, which delivered, you know, what I think is now is an award-winning project, a number of affordable units that help meet the needs for our community. Council has adopted a homeless strategic plan, and we're continuing our homeless advisory committee meetings. We have our next meetings next week. We have our next meetings next, next week. We, we, and through that process, we heard that public safety was a top concern of our community in terms of impact from homelessness. And we, as a result, we adopted a camping ordinance that helps address some of the impacts of homeless encampments and ensure the protection of our critical infrastructure by setbacks from our, from our water treatment plant. Likewise, we, we're continuing to update our, our general plan housing, housing element. As I mentioned, we, we did, council adopted updates to the, to the downtown plan, which supports additional housing. But we're also in the midst of review of our general plan by Housing and Community Development. We'll be bringing that forward for, in the near future and all kind of set the tone for housing for the next six years, at least in terms of our, our general plan. Likewise, we continue to make investments in vegetation management. A lot of work, particularly led up by Mayor Lands in terms of reducing some of the fire-prone vegetation at River Park, but also our park sewer tenant doing a lot of vegetation management work at Porterfield Creek to, you know, reduce the impacts of wildfire on our, our community. And so there's, I think, a number of key accomplishments in the housing and homelessness goal, but there's still, still more work to do. And particularly, that's reflected in the general plan. Mike, next slide. So in terms of infrastructure, of course, touched a little bit about this already. We, we are embarking on the Advanced Water Meter Project. That's going to be really an all hands-on deck project for, for our public works team as we replace 3,300 meters throughout our system. You may have seen today, we had one of our consultants out doing sewer maintenance work, and that's an incredible, a critical work that helps to maintain our sewer collection system. We, council did provide funding in the budget through utilizing, utilization of development impact fees to fund the Osti Road Capital Improvement Project. And I'm going to make an announcement later in the manager report to talk a little bit about our, our recent development about a potential, a grant opportunity. But that's, that's still to come. And we, we have developed some preliminary cost estimates that were reviewed by the Public Works Subcommittee and is, is talking points with our elected officials. Likewise, in, it, it was a number of years since council has dedicated funding for annual striping and pavement management. We've already made, made some critical but small-scale projects. We did some repaving on West Second Street where the, the pavement was particularly in fact, impacted from some of our trees within our downtown landscaping. But we also made improvements on Vista View Drive. We had a fairly section of road that was, had been fairly degraded, and, and we improved that corner. And we were able to do that because council set aside funding in the budget. We have also since executed a contract with a consulting firm to develop a citywide striping plan. That process is, is, is in process, it's underway. And once that's done, we'll look to put that out to bid to do some critical striping on the Boulevard as well as Foothill Drive. Over the, the last six months and continuing, we, we are doing quite a few park improvements. We, we, of course, completed the, the new pickleball at Ferber Park and the, the new plaza restrooms, which the water was turned on today in, in, in City Plaza. And I think you're going to see that, that those are going to be, there was already someone who wanted to use those, so I think those are going to be well received by, by our community. And the basketball court, the two new basketball courts are currently under construction at City Park. Some of those will, projects either have been delivered or in process. And we'll be bringing forward, hopefully at your next meeting, an amendment to the CIP for the, for, for the dog, dog park, our dog park project and asking council to consider a, a budget adjustment to fund that CIP and move that forward. We, we also had a complete street safety assessment that was prepared with the assistance of UC Berkeley and a consulting engineering firm. That, that report is draft. It should be finalized in the near future, and it will outline various improvements and, or, and make various recommendations that we'll be bringing forward for council's consideration. Next slide, Mike. On the IT front, you mentioned that, you know, we made a number of investments to address cybersecurity. We've led up by our finance director, implemented a number of new IT systems to ensure that we reduce potential impacts from, you know, bad actors, cyber threats. We, we now have multi-factor authentication. We have spam control systems. And, and those all came because council supported investments in those, those IT systems. And we, we continue to realize the benefits of the permitting and software, the permit software through OpenGov. I think the community and developers really like to be able to apply for permits online at any time of the day. And it's, you know, they're kind of moving away from having to bring that paperwork into, you know, into City Hall and, and, you know, be able to pay online and so forth. Of course, we also have investments in our budgeting software, OpenGov, which there's portals where the community can take a look at, at the budget and the current expenditures at any time. And of course, later or very soon, you'll, you'll kind of get a, a mid-year budget update by our finance director. And we're, we're really looking at making additional improvements to our city website. We have most recently updated and created some new park pages. And with the leadership of our city clerk, we are looking at opportunities to do some rebranding and provide some unique elements in our website, particularly like for our police department. But, but also we'll be doing the same with our, our Public Works Department, putting service requests online. So again, to facilitate addressing, you know, the needs of our community. Next slide, Mike. In planning and sustainability right now, the Bumgarner Subdivision Project is underway, as well as the Bay to Colley Tribal Housing Project. We want to mention that in, in particular because that our, our staff is, is spending a lot of, you know, a fair amount of time and resources responding to those, those development projects. And so it's a, it's a big part of our, our work plan. We, over the last several months, we, we did process some new planning applications. The 101 North Project, which is the old gas station site next to Papa's Pizza in downtown. Of course, we transferred the Alexander Valley Medical, or the, the Times Square Parcel to Alexander Valley Medical Center. And we are continuing to work with them on delivery of their new 40,000 square foot medical center. Of course, council did approve a affordable housing project on, on Osti Road. We, we're also still continuing to work with a consultant on a rate and apportionment study. This is in regards to an assessment district or community facility district for future development. I mentioned our housing element already. We updated our code enforcement ordinance, and we, we've seen, you know, the outcome of that with some of the properties on the Boulevard and enabling us to more readily clean, that clean up nuisances in our community, as, as long with, you know, additional responses that were necessary to, to the grand jury, updating our zoning ordinance for the downtown, as I mentioned earlier. One, one item under planning stability that's to come is to bring forward an update to the circulation element to address what's referred to as VMT or vehicle miles travel the way from the kind of level of service analysis. So it's, it's, it's new state legislation that's driving this change, but it's also an opportunity to look at our, our general plan and our circulation element. Mike, next slide. This is, this is a slide that really, again, brought forward because it wasn't explicitly stated within, within our goals, but we've spent a, a fair amount of staff time really dedicated to parks, as I mentioned, the pickleball courts, new restrooms on the plaza, basketball courts, and, and, and the dog park. Those all are, you know, very significant improvements that have been made or in process that we, we haven't embarked on in, in quite a long time. We're obviously working with the open space district on acquisitions, some additional open space. And we've been very aggressive at dedicating a lot of budget resources to vegetation management, particularly in our, in our parks budget, you know, focusing on Porterfield Creek because of the adjacent, the impacts to adjacent residents. Next slide. Again, parks maintenance. And this parks maintenance really could be parks and facilities maintenance. We accomplished some really key maintenance projects at the, at the senior center and the police station. Both of those have, were repainted, and I think as a result, look much, it was much-needed or deferred maintenance, and I think it improves the aesthetic appearance of those buildings. And we will, we are, we have it scheduled to do the refinishing of our, of our arbors. We're also looking at the possibility of whether to put a, a permanent covering on the main stage at the plaza to provide a more wet, all-weather surface, but also to address the impact of the sun on the, on some of that, some of that, that yellow cedar. So we, we've done quite a bit of park maintenance activities, you know, repaving, resurfacing our Ferber City, as well as the trail at City Park. And we, we're continuing to explore expansion of our, of our recreation services and seek ways to, to do that. One of the things that's in progress, and we heard from council, is to look at improving or addressing security. And we're, that's, that is, that's in progress, particularly Ferber and Clark Park, where we've had some incidents. Most recently, we did purchase a new chipper at the direction of council. And we, we've also ordered a new, a new truck that would support the chipper. The, the truck hasn't been completed or delivered yet, but that's, that's in process. Mike, next slide. So I'd like to turn over this slide to Chief Ferguson. Chief's really led up a number of important public safety and emergency prepared initiatives. So Chief, take it over.
Thank you, David, Mayor, members of the council. I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory here, some of the accomplishments that we've had, both in public safety and emergency preparedness. They really go hand in hand. And so we can just jump right to the next slide, if you would please. So when we talk about public safety accomplishments, first and most important is the approval of the 10th Officer, council approved last year. The benefit and the importance of this has been longstanding, trying to get an SRO program back up. And this hiring of this 10th officer position was really beneficial as the school contributed some financial obligation on their end to make this possible. And absent getting anybody hired there, we really weren't, weren't going to get this up and running. We've run into a couple of challenges, so we came back to council, sought a hiring incentive to be competitive with other cities in the county. And we're probably going to see you again soon because of the challenge that exists there, but we're really trying. And as far as continued public safety, we've had some older police vehicles. We did some upgrades, council approved, some Dodge Chargers. The reason you see two here is we had to carry one over from. Sorry about that. As I said, we were trying to stay consistent with trying to do one per fiscal year, but the build-out's taken longer than we anticipated. But we do have two new ones ordered now that should be here as a fiscal year. Animal Control Services, this is really important because several members of the council were here when this contract was approved. Again, renewed the contract. And I just wanted to add a couple of things about that real quick, if I could, because I think it is important. For those who did vote this in, probably are wondering, is what we're paying for this worth what we're getting? And I can assure you that it is. Currently, the city's paying about $27,000 annually for this service. And, and to date, from when we did the contract, council did this contract back in June of '21, they've had 834 different incidents caused. And that, that's 185 stray dogs, wildlife, vicious bites, things that we no longer have to handle. And the benefit of that is it relieves that obligation from us and, and allows us to shift our priorities. And one of those is our community service officer being more active in, in starting up the AVA program, abandoned vehicle abatement through the county. Because of that, we've been able to generate revenue for the city over $10,000, which has been hugely beneficial. And at the same time, address a very important parking issue and abandoned vehicle problem in our community. So that's been really hugely beneficial as far as that's concerned. I'm going to jump back over here real quick. And then the, on to emergency preparedness. David already mentioned the Resilient Cloverdale, Cloverdale Ready Campaign. Council approved in each of these two fiscal years, $50,000. And that is going to go a long way. Our next priorities are going to be shifting into our neighborhoods and doing community block parties and pushing out the information. But one of the most critical things that this money helped purchase was an interactive website, which is hugely beneficial, teaches people how to build. It's kind of a fun game, interactive on the internet, how to build a go-bag, what needs to be in it. So, and that's still in the process. We're going to get that up and running with the funding. And the radar trailer and messaging board, this could go either way in public safety from the radar and traffic safety program, but also the messaging board, which is going to be critical for emergencies, where we can put that out on the Boulevard if need be or anywhere. And then the CalOES grant. David talked about critical infrastructure, and this is one of the key ones for the Public Works Corp yard. We completed a grant application last year. It's taken quite some time to go through the process, but we are still in the running. We have not received notice that we're not. So we're hopeful that that's going to go through. And, and the importance of that is it's going to be able to run our corporation yard and the fuel station, which is vital during emergencies. And so that's really what I have to report for public safety and emergency preparedness.
All right. Thank you, Chief. So that, that really concludes the staff's overview and presentation of the budget goals that were included in, in the two-year budget that was adopted by council. What we're recommending council do is, of course, assess the, the budget goal statements. Review, as we did, we covered the accomplishments that we made during the fiscal year, including the projects that are still in progress, which are all part of our work plan. Like to seek your feedback, of course, if there's any, you know, key initiatives that you'd like to see us consider as we move forward. And if, if you see fit, you know, update or modify existing goals to, and continue to add, you know, any key strategies or objectives that help us, you know, provide that guidance in our work plan for, you know, making progress on those goals. And of course, adding any new goals. So the, the request from staff tonight just was, is really digest the overview of the presentation and, and provide any feedback that you'd like to see as we, we continue implementation of the, the two-year budget over the next 18 months.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Chief. I have kind of, I never go first, but I want to ask the council a question. Should we see the next presentation before we make comments about manipulating goals with the next, next one being the Financial Committee or Financial Report?
However you want to do.
I'm just, I'm bringing it up because I don't know where our budget is with our goals being accomplished. It's hard for me to make decisions without knowing where we It's hard for me to make decisions without knowing where we are potentially. And that's just me. So if anybody else wants to do anything different.
I just had a couple of questions about the last presentation, if I can do that. Under the revenue enhancement slide, I had a question pertaining to the second item, implementation of low-income household water assistance program. That doesn't sound like an enhancement of revenue. It sounds like a decrease to some extent. What am I missing there?
The reason it's categorized under revenue enhancement was because in that particular program, the, let me bring it up here. The program enables our, some qualifying residents to actually have the state pay their utility bills on their behalf. In some cases, those outstanding balances were fairly significant and may, we may not have realized payment if it wasn't for the state providing that assistance. So I think it was a valuable program that the state implemented to assist our, you know, the customers that were very much in need. And as mentioned, I think between their reage program and the LIWAP program, we brought in about $50,000 in revenue that we may not have received. Sometimes what happens with those accounts is they go into collections or the debt gets written off because it's not collectible. And so the state actually is modifying the low-income household water assistance program to try to provide additional, they recognize that it needs to evolve and they're working on expanding the program so that it can capture more residents in need. And again, I think it's helpful because it does bring that revenue into our water and our wastewater enterprise that we may have lost. And so I look at it as revenue enhancement, just from the perspective that if it wasn't for the work that our staff did, the paperwork, the interaction with the state and all of the compliance requirements, we may not have received that revenue.
So that's different than the first one where we have a water meter. I thought there was one where we were reimbursed for delinquent payments. Is that what we're basically referring to?
Right. That was during COVID, the state issued a mandate that we couldn't shut off any water meters. And that was our traditional process for non-payment.
Right.
Of course, we would do a lot of work to work with customers to figure out payment plans and so forth, but sometimes unfortunately, it just led to, non-payment led to shut-offs.
So the state has two programs, the one where delinquent payments they'll make, they'll help make, and then also the second one where they'll assist with payments. Are they different?
They're different. They were different programs. And the reage program has since sunsetted. Where I think we're still completing all the necessary reporting with that program. But the low-income household, we call it LIWAP, continues in process. And again, it's being modified to try to capture, you know, it's kind of like a utility assistance directed towards water customers.
Okay. And then I guess at some point, we're going to start talking about, again, with the revenue enhancement, with a general sales tax of 1%?
That certainly.
Is that going to be on the goals?
That's the kind of feedback we're seeking from council, that, you know, a ballot initiative isn't currently included or funded in the budget, but if that's something council wants to provide direction on, that would be something we would bring forward with an overview of what it, what kind of ballot measure does council want to bring forward? You know, what's the cost of placing a ballot measure, you know, polling, et cetera?
Yeah. Well, I think that's really important. I know Councilmember Bagby, I believe you and I had talked about that at some point in the past, where that sales tax would cover somebody going to Santa Rosa to buy an automobile. Actually, Bruce Royser brought this up to us because he buys heavy equipment every year that's into the millions of dollars. We would get 1% of that sales tax. Right now, there's no mechanism in place for us to capture that. So I really think that's an important goal that we try and achieve. And then the last thing was on the infrastructure. I'm glad to hear that the new bathroom's been repaired and I guess our warranty wasn't voided because we didn't do any of the work. They did it. So can we get rid of that porta potty now by the post office, you think?
Absolutely. I think we'll make a call to our solid waste provider about ceasing the operation of the port-alet and have that be removed.
The door is still open and you drive by there and you get to look inside the porta potty. So, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Bagby? Does anyone want to, table this, where's that? Listen to H2 and then revisit this? So that in case there's, because of the budget or no? Or do you think we're pretty clear and on track with what we want? As if we're where we want to be? Yeah. Okay. No comment? So I'll just say no then and we'll just, I think that we've accomplished a lot. We're hitting our goals and I love it. You guys have done a lot of good work watching good things happen to Cloverdale. Every single person on this dais has had a hand in it and I love seeing that and thank you guys. All right, move on.
Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it over to our finance director. Finance director's going to walk you through a presentation on our mid-year budget review, including your package. It's a copy of the presentation and there's also a very detailed mid-year report. Suzy?
So I tend to go quick. So if I go too fast, just tell me to slow down. But this presentation is an accompaniment to our, to the mid-year report that's in your package and I'm just trying to hit the highlights for you here. Next slide. When looking at the general fund revenue, what I want to do is look at the total percent of what has been received and I want to look at anything that's not close to 50 or I want to know why it's not close to 50. When I'm looking at these revenues, the general fund taxes are at 47%, which is really normal because some of our payments are only received in the second half of the year and there's also the timing issues, sometimes we get them in January. When I'm looking at the charges for services at 42%, it's slightly below the 50% mark, but I expect that there are going to be things that we're going to plan to do in the second half of the year and we are going to be at our expenses. We typically don't have a hard time spending. The overhead and administration is just totally a number that's in there that's plugged. We don't know what the overhead is until the end of the year and we can calculate everything. The miscellaneous revenues include refunds and reimbursements from developer deposits and also there's a, our workers' comp carrier has changed the way that they're processing our workers' comp claims and so now we're getting some checks for things that used to just be credit toward our invoice. So you'll see an offset in the workers' comp expense based on the revenue that's received here. It's a net zero effect. And for licenses and permits, we're already at 100%. So we've already received the amount that we thought we were going to receive for the whole year. We know we're capturing more expense due to OpenGov and doing this process. We're not sure if more people are getting building permits because it's so easy or if we're just capturing more. And also included in that are some cannabis permits and we, as you know, we brought forward, there were a couple that were behind and they paid up. And so that we did see more income based on that. Fines and assessments. This number is from municipal code violations. They have been billed and so they're showing as revenue, but they have not been paid. So I just want to make that clear, that even though it looks like we've received 135%, we haven't actually received it because it hasn't been paid. And so, and total, our total general fund revenues are at 48% and I expect that we're going to be at 100 by the end of the year. I wanted to point out that for the sales tax, you can see that we were kind of, we were going up and up and up, like at rates of 7% and 12%. And then last year, we kind of got stagnant and we just kind of flatlined. But this year, just for the first six months of revenue that's been received for property taxes, we've already seen a 4% increase. Next slide. So our sales tax is flat compared to prior years. Our sales tax took a significant decrease in 1920 and has been gradually increasing each year, but we're still not to the level that we were in 1819. Our sales tax is still lagging. The cannabis tax, it's showing a slight increase, but it's because we've received past due payments because as everyone knows, we actually decreased the revenue, so, or the tax rate. So there's no way that we could actually be increasing. The franchise fees are kind of normal. We receive sometimes in January, sometimes in December. This year, we're expecting to receive one of our franchise payments in January. That's why we're, we look a little skewed. TOT is likely low for the period because we haven't received all of the payments and we're expecting that this will likely rebound. And the UUT is currently, it looks like a huge increase, but it's a 2% increase over what we budgeted. And then business license, you can see that the last two years, there's been a huge decrease and that's because we changed when we do the billing. HDL does it in January, we used to do it in December, but it'll be there. And then you can see here, our licenses and permits, this is what I was telling you earlier, that we've already received 97% of the budget for just that line item and the cannabis permit. Next slide. And so then we're going to look at the general fund expenditures, next slide. So, city administration, this one is looking at the general fund budget expenses now and by department. So city administration is at 43%, but there are contracts that are out there that are typically done later in the year. We expect that those are still going to happen. Police, they're right at 50%. They couldn't be more accurate if they tried. Parks and facilities are at 33%, but that's because we hadn't at December 31st finished the pickleball, the basketball, the restroom. All of those things are still going to come in and they're still going to happen. Building and engineering, there's a budget for a park wall feasibility study and the budget for $240,000, that hasn't been done and there's been no cost associated to it yet, but I'm sure it will still happen and we'll see those expenses later. What else? I think that pretty much goes through all of them that are important, that you would want to highlight. Let's go to the next screen and the next slide. This is a pie chart that shows where our money is paid from the general fund. The wages and benefits are by far the largest, followed by contract services. This is typical of all of the years since I've been here anyway. And then the next slide shows the expenses, but by department. So you can see there's our police department that's taking up 53% of the total budget and then city administration is 26%. Just a different way to look at the same number. When we look at the fund balance on the next slide, one more please. Thank you. So the fund balance, this is the fund balance by category. We have assigned, committed and unassigned. So just a reminder that committed, let me start with this one. Assigned are intended to be used by the government for specific purposes, but they don't meet the criteria of being classified as restricted or committed. So restricted and committed are more stringent and committed are amounts that can be spent for specific purposes determined by a formal action of the city council. So anything that's in this committed section here cannot be spent by, unless the city council says, I want to use these funds for this purpose. And you've already said, I want to use these funds for emergency reserve, contingency reserve for undergrounding. So we have set those aside. But our total assigned is $2,249,601. But of that, all of the ones that say dash ARPA, those were from the grant funds that we received and we took them in as lost revenue from the COVID period. But now, but then we said, we're going to set them, set a portion of those aside for specific purposes. Those are one-time, one-time monies. We won't get those again. So we have 2.2 in assigned. Once we spend those ARPA funds, then we're going to, it'll be more like, what, 500, 600,000? The committed are set aside for emergency reserve and contingency reserve and then our unassigned is 1.4 million. That 1.4 million leaves us a 12.75% reserve of the unassigned. And if you count all of the funds, then we have a 58% reserve. Okay. So 12.75 is lower than what we would typically see. Typically, we want to be at at least 25%. But I do think that when we have the audit in the next meeting or two, we're going to see that our expenses from the prior years was a lot less and I think we're going to see that that's going to then increase the fund balance. So I don't think we're going to see a 12.75 by the end when we're done.
And Suzy, if I can, just add to your comment. Typically, every year, we bring forward the audit from the previous fiscal year, which ended June 30th of 2022. That's a, basically, the audit is a way of certifying our budget expenditures and budget revenues for the previous fiscal year. With the audit usually comes an identification of was there, did we overspend our budget or did we underspend our budget? And if we underspent our budget, there's an amount that while we adopted the budget showing we spent it all, if we didn't spend it all, that comes back and shows that there's this additional remaining funds that are going to be brought into your fund balance going forward. So that amount will be identified. That's what Suzy was alluding to. And when council takes that up, part of your budget reserve policy is how do you want that overage to be allocated? And it's usually done in accordance with your reserve policy. So that's how you build the, the assigned funds for vehicle replacement, building maintenance, uncompensated absences and equipment replacement. You take part of that overage and you apply it to those accounts. So it helps to build up your fund balance. So it's really critical, the point that Susie was making, that, you know, if you add all this up and it's part of your general fund, it, it looks like you have a really robust fund balance because it's, you know, 50 something percent. But if you look at just, well, what's not, what's not assigned, then it's, it's, you know, we're down at, at 12, 12.7 or, you know, or, you know, nearly 13, 13%. So again, that will, will change. But part of that overage will, will likely be allocated to those. Again, those assigned funds, which is, which is, is, I think, a good practice because you're, you're earmarking those, you're setting aside those funds. They're still in the general fund, but they're, they're, it's council's way of putting, building savings accounts for future expenditures in those categories.
So the emergency and the contingency reserve will get some too, depending on how much is, what, what the amount is of revenue that we have with the fund balances. Okay, Mike, I think we can go to the next one. This is, ooh, a hard to see slide. But basically, it just shows how much is assigned, committed, and unassigned, and where we have been in the past. So you can see like our assigned is, we have a lot more assigned than we have had in the past. Our committed looks to be about the same, but our unassigned is less. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the next slide, Mike. We'll look at public works. And the gas tax revenues, we've received 25%. It's totally normal because they pay every one, every two months or a quarter. And this, this is in align with what we have seen in the past. So it's, this is not anything to be worried about. The next slide, Mike, shows the public work expenditures by department. Facilities maintenance, parks, street maintenance, storm drains. Again, we're not seeing a lot of expense. We're not seeing a lot of the revenue yet either. And when we have the revenue, that's typically when we're going to do a project or something and that's when we're going to have more expense. The water enterprise revenue on the next slide, next slide. Let me just skip through. This shows the water charges that we've received. So other revenues include waters on and offs, the water shortage, surcharge, and hydrant inspections and interest. So the water charges are, are completely just water usage charges in this. From what we budgeted to where we are year to date, we're at 54%. Typically, we would expect to receive about 58% of our revenue for our water usage charges by the end of December, simply because we have the most of the high heat months behind us and we're not going to have high heat before the end of the year. So we're a little less than what we would expect to be at, but in pretty good shape compared to where we could be. The next slide, Mike. This shows charges for services. And this, this slide does include the water shortage and the penalties and turnoffs and ons. So you can see that we're going back up in the right direction. This is mostly because of our rate increases and because we're charging penalties now. I'm going to expect that that's going to start going down because next month, we have, we're reeling back the shortage surplus charge from 25 to 18%.
If, if I can, Susie, just make a comment. We, because we were very closely monitoring water enterprise revenue, bringing it forward as part of the monthly report to the finance, admin, and police subcommittee. And, and what we were tracking was particularly, you can see it in fiscal year 21, 22, that's, that's the impact of the drought. Thankfully, our customers, our, our residents did a very good job at conserving water. But what that meant is impacts to our revenue. The water sales drive revenue. When you don't have water sales, your revenue goes down. And that, that, that was helped out because the, really late fiscal year 22, or early 22, 23, the surcharges, we implemented the new water shortage, emergency surcharges, and, and with the rate increases. So that helped us bring, bring back up where we were more in alignment with our forecast. That was part of the water rate study because we, we were starting to see some pretty significant impacts if, if we had continued on that trajectory without council's changes to the water rates.
And the next slide will even point that out even more, that this is just water usage. You can see how much we went down. This is, this has no penalties, no surcharges included in any of the years. So you can see where we're at. And, you know, our water usage is less than a, maybe about the same as it was in 2017 and 18. And then we can look at the water expenditures. Again, this is by expense type. The debt services low because we have loan payments that are payable in May only on one of the loans. Services and supplies are on the lower side, but there are expenses that are planned in the second half of the fiscal year. And then the construction vehicle, there's a lot of things that are in there that we haven't finished yet. The F well pump, we have a transfer pump, a well seven, a well eight. And I think we got the mini excavator, but then there's overhead. So we've only done 30% or used 30% of the expenses to date. But we will see that by the end of the fiscal year. And then the next slide shows the water enterprise by the types in a pie chart. So again, just like in the general fund, its salaries and benefits are 50% and services and supplies are 32. This 10% for a construction vehicle and, and overhead also. And when we look at the sewer enterprise revenue, kind of go through this one really quick because it, right on at 51%. I mean, the penalties, we didn't expect that there would be so many penalties. So we didn't budget for the full amount. But we have had quite a few penalties, which, going back to Gus's question earlier, the water reage program really helped me, it was date specific. If they, if they are still past due for this date to this date, we can help with that. The live lab income is not date specific. And it's just if you're income eligible and you are past due, then they will help you. So that has certainly helped us in our, in, in getting people so that they're not shut off. Yeah, which is always a blessing. Okay, the next slide shows the revenue sources. Just a chart so you can kind of see, obviously, the charges for services are up. That's because of our rate increase. And then everything else is, I mean, you can't even see the little ones, but transfers in are right there at 50% and they're pretty typical. And then when we look at the sewer price expenses, they're at 36%. A portion of the vehicle transfers and overhead and sewer main slip lining project are not included in, or have not happened yet. So that's why it's low. I, I think it's pretty normal though. The next slide shows the expenses by category, same thing, 52%. They do have 40% of their services and supplies. And then for the airport enterprise, we're getting close to the end, I promise. There's, they're only at 20% for their revenues. It's all, I don't want to say all, but the majority of that is because the grant hasn't been received. The grant is for, for an FAA grant that we're expecting for infield drainage improvement project. And then if we could go to the next slide, Mike, we could see the expenses and you can see that we haven't started that project. So we haven't started it and we haven't gotten the revenue. But everything else, yeah, everything else is normal. A brief overview, the revenues are expected to meet or exceed the budgeted amounts for fiscal year 22, 23. And expenses are expected to meet or slightly exceed. I don't, I don't anticipate that they're going to exceed the budget amount, but some might. The fund balances will be updated when the audited financials are available. And staff is anticipating that the general fund balance will increase based on actual expenses coming in lower than budgeted. And then if there's any questions.
Thank you. Who wants to go first?
Susie, thank you for the presentation. There's, there's a lot to digest, but just a couple of things. The 21, 22 audit, when, when can we expect to see that? You, you mentioned something about it.
It's going to be in March. I'm hoping the first meeting, it may be the second.
But we also, I believe, have a policy that the council needs to see. I'm not sure when that is. I, I thought for some reason it was December 31st, but I could be wrong. Something for us to check. And then lastly, we have new council members. There's a lot of jog in here, like transfers in, transfers out. Are we doing an educational program for new council members on, on what the heck we're talking about? But we're not doing anything like a classroom, you know, going over the different things?
I wasn't planning to, but I certainly can.
I was just putting that out there.
Yeah. If that's what you want, I'm happy to, to make that happen.
Good report. And I've got a couple of questions, but I'll ask it later. It's very easy, so.
I just wanted to say thank you, Vice Mayor, on that. And Susie, I'd love to sit down with you. I mean, just to get a little more in-depth explanation, I think that'd be great. So whatever you have time and, and contact me and we'll set that up. I'd appreciate it. So thank you.
And Mayor, Members of Council, if I can. One part of the budget that's kind of helpful from a high-level overview is the, it, it's your summary of fund balances. And it literally lists all the funds. And it shows beginning fund balance, transfers in, transfers out, expenditures, revenues, and ending fund balance. And what that provides is, it's, it's a snapshot for the budget year. So you can get a feel for trends from, you know, where are we starting to where we're ending? And, and that's where, if there's a transfer in or a transfer out in that particular fund, it kind of can prompt questions. What, you know, where's the revenue coming in from versus where is it going out to? So for, for example, we collect an ad valorem tax. That ad valorem tax is a transfer into your general fund. So we'll see that in your, in your budget summaries. You'll see that, that transfer out from the ad valorem tax to a transfer into your general fund. So anyways, that, I know, I know Susie will give you an overview, but that's, that's a good one to look at because you can see all the funds. You can see your impact fees, landscape lighting districts, zones, et cetera. And it's a real easy kind of spreadsheet or, or, or data piece to look at because it's, it's all on one page. You don't have to do a lot, you don't have to comb through the budget. And so I, I find it, I, this is one I look at quite a bit and find it very, very helpful.
Susie, thank you. That was good. It showed that we're on track, but we need to remain conservative. That's about the third grade level of it right there. As I always talk, read the last pages of a budget first to see where your, your ending is and you're starting and see if you're where you're supposed to be and then figure out why. So third grade level says, don't plan any big projects that we don't already have planned. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Moving on to H4, City of Cloverdale, travel, advance, and reimbursement policy.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Included in your packet is, is a, a draft policy. This item is being brought to you to provide guidance both to council as well as senior staff for addressing travel, travel and reimbursement expenses. Frankly, this is a policy that we should have had in place with the adoption of AV 1234. I think in, in, in large part, all of our expense practices have been consistent, compliant with AV 1234. But with that said, it is important that we, we do have an official policy on the books that provides how travel expenses, training expenses are covered, and ultimately, how they are reimbursed. We, we really did, one of the benefits of being kind of a, a late adopter, if you will, was we, we literally obtained policies from every city in Sonoma County and went through all of them. I want to credit our, our city clerk for conveying, working with his colleagues on, on getting all their policies. And, and so what, what you find before you is, is a, a, a policy that I think we wanted to make it as simple as possible, but clearly identify what's, what's reimbursable and what's not. Maybe the most specific change is from our, our current kind of process of reimbursement, it was to consider a per diem rate for, for meals. And that, that, that practice, I, I think is, is a, is a, is a better practice than, than simply using a receipt basis. And again, the, the per diem rates were, were intended to be set to address, you know, what is a reasonable expense for, for meals, for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We also have guidance on cash advances as well as some of your expense reports. We did include in the packet a reimbursement form that helps with, you know, senior staff. And part of one of our challenges is we, we get, we get asked, is there enough budget to cover training? And it, we don't know unless it's provided to us. What are, what are the anticipated travel expenses? And those typically include, of course, the, the cost of, of the training itself, the, the travel expenses, whether it be automobile, maybe in some cases airplane. And, and then there, there could be, you know, taxis or, or overcharges at the event itself. And then, and then typically hotel and food expenses. So once you add all those up, and there's usually some un- So once you add all those up, and there's usually some unknown taxes in there when it comes to hotels, that this will help us kind of better with, with budgeting and making sure that we've got adequate funding available when, when trading requests come forward. You may, you may ask why this wouldn't apply to all staff. It's certainly our intent to have the policy apply to all staff. Right now, it, it, it's stated in the agenda report, it applies to council and senior staff. The reason it doesn't, why they apply to all staff is because we need to meet and confer with our labor groups on, on, on this policy. Don't think there's anything that they should be concerned about. It seems pretty straightforward to me. But with that said, that, the advice we received was, before it's applicable to all staff, we, we do a meet and confer process with our, with our labor groups. The, the ask tonight is to adopt the resolution approving the travel and training policy. It was reviewed by the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee. I know our, our city attorney's office has conducted a review and city staff has, you know, tried to thoroughly vet it to make it as comprehensive as possible and address, and provide, you know, real, real guidance on what, what training expenses are covered and which are not.
David, questions or comments? I should have done this before to open it to the public, even though there's zero people in our public and on the virtual. I will make it official. Open to the public, close to the public.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the item by title only. City of Cloverdale, City Council. Act 2023, Resolution of the City Council, City of Cloverdale Approving a Travel Advance and Reimbursement Policy.
Yeah, I'll give that a second.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead and start with Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Subcommittee Reports. First one's Finance, Admin and Police. Recently met, discussed all the items on our current agenda. Let me pull it up real quick. I had it here for you. We have it. We went over several standing items, nothing new. I would suggest people will watch it because there's some good items regarding the 10th Officer and more information as the chief was alluding to, as well as some of the projects going on in town. Our next meeting is March 6th. Planning and Sustainability. Who is the head of the Planning and Sustainability?
I believe it's Councilmember Bagby.
Yes, it's Councilmember Bagby.
Thanks for the reminder. I better make sure I show up at that meeting, and apparently it is going to be February 21st.
Thank you. Public Works and Facilities.
Mr. Mayor, our next meeting is February 28th.
Thank you. Joint City and School District. Am I the head of that one? I don't remember. Am I? Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for April 17th because of February 20th. It falls on a holiday for the school district. And the Homelessness Community Advisory Group.
Our next meeting is coming up here February 13th.
Perfect. All right, Council Reports.
Before we move on, it would be okay to talk about the schedule just very quickly. I just needed to give David an update. There, for plant, for Finance, Admin and Police, we were tight on the last meeting because my SCTA meeting starts at 2:30. They are considering moving SCTA. So let's not move Finance, Admin, Police until they, you know, put a rift in the space-time continuum and try to reschedule a meeting at SCTA that's been at the same time since like 1991. So let's wait and hear back before we, we move ours. And I'll just make it, we'll just make it work if, you know, the meeting doesn't get moved for a couple of months, we'll just try to get what we can get done in an hour. And I don't think it'll be a problem. I'll either drive down there and have to dial into our Subcommittee meeting, or I'll stay home and zoom into Subcommittee and then zoom into SCTA because I think that they'll be able to, they'll be able to have a quorum, you know, if luck stays with us. So we'll just, we'll figure it out as soon as they figure it out. Is that, does that work, City Manager?
I think Councilmember Bagby. I was looking at the calendar for the next meeting of the SCTA, and it's actually, I think it's March 13th. So it's, it's a different, it's, it's an off-date from the next Finance, Admin and Police, so.
Yeah, and I don't know why that, why that happened. It might have been, it might have been for, for different reasons, but yeah, usually it's that first. So, so let's, um, let's not change ours until we know that, what, what that date is, so. Sorry about that oversight with scheduling.
Perfect, thank you. Informational Reports. Legislative Reports. City Manager.
Mayor, Members of Council, I have a quick announcement. The City of Cloverdale has been identified as a finalist for a Department of Transportation Thriving Communities Grant. We're currently coordinating with Sonoma County Transportation Authority and SMART on a letter of commitment. The, the program is intended to provide guidance on addressing transportation-related needs within our, in our community, and I think this represents a really wonderful opportunity if we get picked or chosen. There's, we're one of 30 finalists across the United States. I think we will buy strongly in our, in our letter of commitments middle for, for this effort. So we'll, I'll keep you posted. We'll be planning on submitting our, our letter of commitment by the 15th, which is a due date that has, has provided for this, this program. And it's intended to address, really, this tremendous need for transportation, but also the fact that we have a lot going on around SMART, the need for additional transit services, Sonoma County's efforts to build additional transportation facilities, thinking of the Cracker Road Bridge, the Cracker, the Great Redwood Trail, and, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for some technical assistance around how we can address all of those interests and hopefully bring, you know, additional resources to, to our community.
Thank you. City Attorney?
So as, excuse me, as I'm sure you may recall, the Governor's proclamation of emergencies ending at the end of this month, and so we will be bringing a resolution next meeting to end the, the local emergency at the same time as that concurrently. And because the Governor's proclamation of emergencies ending, that also means the ability to participate remotely in meetings pursuant to AB 361 is also gonna end. There is a new law, AB 2449, that slightly expands when remote meeting participation is allowed, and, and there'll be a presentation on that as well, so that council members know what that, what that entails and what their options are, what the council's options are.
Thank you.
You know, I think Councilmember Bagby and I were at the Sonoma County Clean Power meeting, and they did a wonderful presentation on that, on the new regulation that's coming in. And, and it is, I think, somewhat flexible that you could actually telethon it still. So I, I'm, I'm hoping that the presentation that you give is really going to be thorough.
It will, it will, it will touch on everything, and it will touch on also just reminder about the Brown Act's traditional process, which remains an option to participate remotely that way as well.
And I'm sorry, I should ask this question now. With that, are you going, going to do your presentation before the sun sets so that we are familiar with it for the first meeting? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, Status Updates, Winter Storms, Current Impacts on Water Supply and COVID-19.
Okay, real quick, I think winter storms, I mean, obviously winter's not behind us. We, I think we fared very well in our response. We are continuing to process our claims through the California Disaster Act, and we'll keep council apprised how we do in that effort to get reimbursed for some of our expenses. With respect to current impacts to water supply, kind of good news, we often track the, what's called the U.S. Drought Monitor, which provides kind of a overview of the status of drought across the United States. And the drought monitor did officially move Sonoma County from, from severe, we've been in a severe state for, I think, about three years now, to moderate drought. So much, the picture's much better in terms of our, our water condition in the state. So hopefully things continue. We're, we're seeing Lake Sonoma at about 240,000 acre feet, kind of the flood level is 250,000 acre feet, so we're, we're nearly 97% full at Lake Sonoma. At Lake Minasino, we're in, we're now in the flood pool. We were in the water supply pool previously, so it's being managed through the FERO program or forecast-informed reservoir operations. And that's what's driving, and there's some, some comments about the releases from Lake, Lake Minasino, but I, I know this, this Balancing Act with the Army Corps of Engineers is just trying to preserve some capacity in, in the, in the reservoir to address any future storm events we might get for the remaining precipitation year. And so it's always a balancing act, trying to predict what the weather's going to do. But right now, we're, we're above 100, I think we're nearly 117% of the, in flood pool. So good, good shape on the water supply. Our City Attorney, Alex Mog, reported that our COVID-19 emergency is officially ending in the state in February, at the end of February, February 28th. At, at the federal level, the expiration date is May 11th. And just to, to direct you to the memo from the City Attorney regarding 2449, and of course, the presentation that will be forthcoming on the update of the Brown Act.
Thank you, David. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items. Anyone have anything? I have one. It was brought up in our Finance, Admin and Police, and I was told that the public works would be the perfect place for it, so I am bringing it up. I want to try to get the downtown striping, where the, we have two lanes. Remember, we talked about that? So basically, I'll explain it a little bit here so that you guys have an overview. My idea is with where the Such as Spare is and the new Alexander Valley Healthcare, it splits from one lane to two lanes and then back to one lane. We want to look at, I want to look at redesigning that so it slows the traffic flow and make it one lane, so you don't have the racetrack splits to two lanes and then dives back down to one. It just turns into a drag race right there and a lot of issues, and people are driving in the bike lanes, and seeing more people come into that area, we're going to have issues in the future, so I'd like to see if we can look at that.
Yeah, that's the road diet idea for the remainder of Cloverdale Boulevard that really has been mentioned several times and it just needs to be made a priority. So I love the traffic signs, Chief, but on First Street, I think it only encouraged people, I'm sorry to say, to go a little faster. So, but it's definitely, you know, it's just noticeably a problem, and, yeah, we, we need to get moving on the road diets because we're, we're changing from, it's still a highway. It's still realistically a highway. Drivers are just given the signal that, hey, it's wide-open road, go as fast as you want, and then we have kids trying to go to school and bicyclists trying to use it, and it just isn't working. So, yeah, I'd love to see that moved up in the list of priorities and, and make that a priority for this year.
Any other comments, questions, anything good for the order? Seeing none. Meeting adjourned at 8:39. Our next meeting is February 22nd. Thank you.